For those that are in attendance, Mayor Holmes is leaving the ball of work this time, and we don't know if he will be in here at the conclusion or if not at all.
I thought I'd start with just going over some of the types of, different types of permits that we issue in the department. On the commercial side, you have grading permits, building renovation, and sign permits. A lot of people don't know that we have, you know, our zoning ordinance addresses commercial signs. There's a lot of regulations on those, setbacks, size restrictions, things like that. As far as new dwellings, we have single families, duplexes, townhouse, commercial apartments and accessory apartments. The homeowner projects, I kind of call them the existing residential properties, is decks, additions, finished basements, sheds, pools, fences, which everybody's pretty much familiar with.
Demospace as well.
Yeah, there's some life safety issues with finishing the basements, and fire code issues, and egress and things like that, insulation out, the energy code, insulation in older houses and things like that. If you're going to condition the space, which if you're going to finish it, most likely you won't do that. All of these permits, along with those, they'll get a zoning certificate. The commercial properties, it's to ensure that that use is allowed in that zone, and that it meets the setbacks and other dimensional requirements for that zone, for the type of building that's going there. It's pretty much the same with the residential zoning certificates, they deal more with just the dimensional regulations, generally setbacks and coverage, lot coverage of impervious surface. We also issue plumbing and HVAC permits. All of these permits require review to some degree, obviously, some are much more complex than others. And it's to ensure that they're in compliance with all of the building codes that affect that particular plan. Also with the commercial building plans, I coordinate with the state fire marshal's engineer, who's Harry Bradley, he looks at plans for fire safety, which is a, it's an overlap with the international building code, it's, he uses NFPA codes, and there's a lot of similarities there, just a few differences, but that's his area of expertise, so he always looks at those things. And we have Bree and Mickey, who are the secretaries in our department. I'll start with what Mickey prepares the permits after we work up, you know, what the amounts will be and all that. She prepares the permits and zoning certificates in the major facilities, payment documents, and a lot of different forms and paperwork involved with issuing these permits that go across to her desk. She also issues the occupancy permits once the projects are completed, and that gets filed and, I guess, tripliqued in many different places because the tax assessors get a copy of that, and the health department gets a copy of that as well. Telephone calls, a lot of that's to schedule inspections, but we get a lot of questions and complaints from people, just about anything. They're very good at what they do and handling complaints, you know, and questions, any questions they can, they pass along to somebody else who can. Some of the complaints we get are really for DPW or EPD. When we can, we just take the complaint, forward it to, you know, those departments. If we feel that they're going to need to talk to them directly, we have them call EPD or Department of Public Works. And Mickey, one thing, she tracks the number of building permits issued for dwelling permits, and so far this year, there's only been nine. We're expecting Ryan Holmes to finish out Patriots Glen this year, which is another five or six, and I think they'll be done out there.
Is that the last of them?
Yeah, it'll be the last of Patriots Glen, yeah. Bree, she handles all the plan review comment letters that I generate and other correspondence that I generate. She also handles all the aspects involved with special exceptions and variance requests with regard to the zoning ordinance. There's a lot of paperwork involved in that. She has to keep everybody on board for when the meetings are and make sure they're all going to be there, reminds them of that. And then packets get put together, it's information for the board members to look at for each case so that they can help make their decision on what they're voting on, and those get delivered. And I think Michelle and Bree usually take, you take the planning commission packets out, and that gets done. At the end, when the, after the Board of Zoning Appeals hearings, there's a legal opinion that's generated, and the attorney sends it to us, and we go over everything, make sure that it's correct, and then Bree types up the final draft on legal paper, and the chairman comes in and signs it, and then it can be distributed to the person who got the variance. She also orders all the supplies, schedules maintenance for the office equipment, and pretty much anything else we need, she orders and takes care of in there. Her and Mickey do a great job. Building inspections, we have two inspectors, Riff Ellison, who's been here, I think approximately 10 years, very knowledgeable, a lot of years of hands-on construction experience. And we have a new inspector, Jeff Klein, he's been here about five months, he should be testing soon for his first certification. He's had a lot of hands-on experience as well, and I think it's a kind of a unique thing for our department. I think you'd have to go pretty far to find three people with experience, combined experience that we have, I'd say they're probably close to 90 years' construction experience, counting the time we have worked here. And it makes it, it makes it pretty easy to do what we do, because we've all done a lot of the work that we go out and look at, you know, besides taking the certification tests and all that. I think it's, you know, helps a lot. So they go out and do all the inspections for commercial and residential projects to make sure they're, you know, built per plan for the codes, and they're able to, you know, help homeowners with their projects. There's a lot of aspects to certain things, like stairs is a hard thing to build if you don't have knowledge of it. We have a lot of people that have a lot of problems with those. We give out, we have several handouts that we give out to help people with that, but it's still, they require some input quite a bit of the time, and we're able to go out and help them with that. They also go out and look at complaints, people call in about all sorts of things. I mean, we get complaints, drainage issues, structural issues with the storm we had the other week. We have to go out and look at trees on buildings, and there was a few straggling issues with the storm that we went out and looked at. We've had calls over the years, we had one woman who had a snake in her backyard and was afraid to go out, so we went out and looked.
Sent part of her terminal?
No, yes.
Terrified snake.
Terrified. And they, you know, it's not an easy job, it's hard working in the elements, sometimes in the second floor of a townhouse or a single-family home in the summertime, with very little ventilation, no insulation, it did approach as 115, 120 degrees sometimes in there. So it's, it can get quite uncomfortable. Of course, in the wintertime, the cold, and you're trying to write with your bare hands with thin gloves on, it's, it can get a little tough. Another position we have is code enforcement, that's Jeff Holder, who's now a new employee, he's been here about four months, I think, doing a great job. He goes around and inspects town properties for compliance with the zoning ordinance and maintenance issues, high grass, which everybody's heard about the high grass letters. He'll get, we get complaints from tenants in rental properties, and at that point, he's allowed to go in and look at that, whatever they're complaining about. And also, while we're in there, we can look at anything that needs to be addressed in there, because otherwise, we really can't go in until we get invited in by the tenant.
When you have complaints from tenant, exactly what line do you cross or the line you don't cross? I can understand some of the things like the heat with plumbing, but evidently there's a problem, I guess you have to deal with the owner?
Yes.
So there, I would think there's some lines you can cross, if you understand one kind of ground.
Yeah, it's, it's, there's certain things, well, there's some things that you can address that are clear in the code. We have another code that's not listed, this last sheet I handed out, I should have mentioned, that's most of the codes that we use. There's one called the property maintenance code, and that's used mainly for rental properties, you know, for that type of inspection. There's a lot of things in there, the smoke alarms, size of rooms, because we'll get somebody who'll try to make apartments out of an older building, and the rooms may not meet the size requirements, or the ventilation, you have to have ventilation, you know, for certain rooms, certain amount of ventilation. Obviously, the heat, air conditioning is not a requirement, but heat is. It's, after being here for quite some time, you know who the landlords are that take care of the properties and who the ones are that don't, and it's, it's a repeat thing. It's always, when you have problems, it's the same, same people most of the time. And a lot of the times, unfortunately, the tenants use us when they're, they're about to be evicted, they may have lived there for five years with those same conditions, they're about to be evicted, and they call us and complain, and we have to go out. But it's a good thing, because through our problems, we do, you know, it's an opportunity to address them at that point. But that's how a lot of them come in, is when they're about to be evicted. It's amazing. They'll put up with something for the whole years, and then when they're being evicted for lack of payment or whatever, they want to complain about everything. I had one guy who lived on an older house over on Church Street, you know, they're all old properties, and he has come in there, I think it was me and Charles Hicks, he put a marble down on the floor, and he said, "Watch this." Of course, it rolled down the floor, because the floor wasn't level, but it's a hundred-some-year-old house, you know, it wasn't falling down, it just had a little bit of smoke to the floor.
Always didn't roll back.
He did have, he did have some legit, you know, some legit complaints, but, you know, a lot of times, it's ridiculous stuff, too, if they're getting evicted, they want to try to complain about things that really aren't code issues. Sometimes the building inspectors will assist the code enforcement person, because sometimes the problems get a little more involved, if they're structural or plumbing, HVAC that, you know, he needs a little help with. So we work together on that. And I work together a lot with Gene and Terry in the planning department, with the site plans, we're dealing site plans for commercial projects. They provide a lot of, you know, assistance. And the zoning ordinance, we both work out a zoning ordinance, so there's a lot of, you know, dual effort there, you know, with projects, as far as that goes. We also have the charter code, everybody's familiar with, so we have to use that. As far as these, these building and mechanical codes, there's a lot of information here, there's thousands of pages. You can't memorize it all, you have to, have to know a lot of it, and then the rest of it, you have to know where to find it quickly in case you need it or something. And then, of course, new codes come out every three years. The changes aren't, aren't dramatic, but there are changes every three years, and you have to, you know, be aware of them. They usually have seminars that go over the major changes for each code year. And that should be coming up, because 2015 will be a new code.
Do you guys have to get re-certified?
You have to keep getting, continuing education credits to renew your certifications in the, in the, any of these, well, the international building codes. The plumbing and HVAC inspector licenses, they generally, they get renewed. They're supposed to be starting a program with the plumbing for, you know, eight-hour course you go to every year to recertify, but they haven't started that yet. They did it for the first couple of years when I started here, but then they, they stopped doing it, so.
I think, just making a comment, Jeff Klein had sent out, I don't know if he sent out to all the board members or not, about the Hertrick?
Yeah.
How, I didn't know you, in the Hertrick, they're building the building, and they actually lay out a template on, on the floor, I guess.
On the concrete.
Yeah, pour concrete into it, and then create a wall, and then they can, they erect it.
Yeah, it's called tilled-up construction. It's used a lot for larger buildings, like the Amazon building out in Middletown. And what they do, they'll pour the building slab, and they spray a release agent down, and they put foremark down on the ground, and put their reinforcing steel, and everything goes in there, and any blockouts for any windows. And these particular ones, a lot of these, they'll pour it halfway, which is, I believe, three or four inches, and then they stop there, and they have these little plastic, and then they put styrofoam down, two-inch-thick styrofoam, and they had little plastic connectors that they stick through, a whole bunch of them. They let that set up, and they come back and pour a second layer of concrete, and now when your wall's completed, you have some insulation, you have a thermal break in between, because it was concrete, cold temperature transfers right through it. It's a pretty, it's a pretty interesting system, and that's a small building relatively, so they're stacking them up, and of course, you know they're in order on how they're going to need them, they're going to, they're not going to put like, well, the first one we need is down the bottom, they, they have a method, and, you know, with, they'll bring a big crane in and just start setting them up, and probably, I imagine, in not much more than two days, they'll, they'll have all the, you'll see all the walls go up. And they get braces on them.
It's the brain construction or something.
Yeah, they'll get braces on them, and they have, as each one goes up, they have special anchors that go down, if this was the panel, that would stand up, they stand it up with the crane, and then there's an anchor over here, and an anchor over here that gets fastened down, and it will have pole shores on it to hold it in place until they get the rest of the building frame in there, which then holds it all together. It's pretty, it's the first building we've had like that in town, but I, it's the first time I've ever seen it. It's been around for about 20 years, they say, but it's.
That's a kind of a violation.
Yeah, well, they, they get an adhesive between them, but they also have metal brackets that bubble, they have studs coming out, they bolt together, yeah. It's a, it's very interesting, so when it starts happening, it'll, it'll be quick, go from, you'll see nothing, and then all the walls up. And they're, they're planning on being mostly done by the end of December. They won't be selling cars at that point, they'll be in the building, but still working on some finishing and stuff like that, that's their time.
And across the street, they're ahead of schedule?
Yes, the senior apartments, so I've been told are about a month ahead of schedule. So I'm, I'm thinking they're going to be, at the end of November, maybe, looking for a CO over there, somewhere like that.
Are we good? We have three units there.
So that's, you know, come along very well.
Yeah, how many units are in there again?
Fifty-three.
Thirty-three.
Three in the front, and the other one in. And in the old building, there's activity rooms and other things like that. It's, it looks very nice inside.
Does the first apartment give a license?
At times, yes. Sometimes they need to see plans of buildings if they have to go in in a hurry to do something. Usually it's some apartment building, stuff like that, they'd like to see how it's laid out, so when they go in, they know where the rooms are, where someone could be hiding or something like that.
What about as far as code violations?
If, if they see something when they're out of place, maybe, you know, they will mention it to us, and, you know, we'll look at it. Usually not too much, usually I find more stuff than them, since we used to do untagged vehicles, but Louis gave them that responsibility, because they have the ability to look up the tag, which we don't, and identify them. So we now, people call us with, with that complaint, and we just, we take the information and give it to EPD now, but we get quite a few of those.
The change has been good, I think, you know, probably still, it, it had been really aggressive, so, you know.
You had it on the soul.
Not only that, you know, a guy who's got a car with some tag on the street, you see the officer come up, that makes a difference, I suppose, of reporting.
And there's probably other issues involved with that vehicle.
There are many times.
That whole process gets started at that point.
What, what can we do to help? Was the hardest part of your job, what can we do to help, if anything?
Lot of hard parts. I guess sometimes understanding that, you know, what's in the charter code and what's in the zoning ordinance is what I'm supposed to enforce. You know, sometimes business people aren't happy with my decisions or what I, how I make my decision, it's based on what's in those books and in the building codes. And a lot of times, they'll, they may come to you and say, "Well, I can't, why do I have to do this? Why can't I do it this way or that way?" You know, when, when there's a way to do something differently that gets us to the same endpoint, we do that, but if it's something specific that, you know, certain zoning issues, it's, it's law for the town of Elkhart, and it's our laws, and you have to be done that way.
You know, a recent event that Mr. Bromwell's been having to deal with was, we had this grate shell, you know, that's what I'm calling it, a grate shell, a winch here, and we had a building destroyed by a tree, and when the homeowner approached Mr. Bromwell for, you know, the criteria to get a building permit, then you realize that the actual property was non-conforming, the, the structure, and then, and when you replace it, it has to conform once you destroy it. And then, and that entails quite a bit of expense for a homeowner, because they may have to have a survey done to, you know, to define the boundaries of the property, to meet setback requirements, or they have, if they're eligible for variance, they have to go through a variance process, which costs, you know, three or $400 or whatever, or two, for legal opinion once they have done. And they get very angered by the fact that he has to go through this process, and, and of course, that's compounded by the fact that they just lost their property, and I'm not exactly sure if their insurance coverage or not, or if that coverage translates over to all the expenses that are going along with the building of the building that they do it. So in a lot of cases like that, citizens will complain about the town or thing, but actually, he's, in his case, he's bound and obligated to enforce what the walls are. I mean, so you do run into those situations where, you know, where it has understanding, I guess that's understanding that code is placed, that dictates what you do, not an arbitrary decision by any individual person right now.
Yeah, I just, if anyone comes to you, just, you know, you can always come to me, and I can explain the situation, but it's not always, you know, not always clear, and it's something that, things you don't, typically, other people don't deal with on a daily basis or any basis, you know, some of these things that are in the zoning ordinance.
Learn a lot.
Yeah, there's a lot of.
Call the first, that the person I enforce it, come there.
Yeah, we, you know, unfortunately, we're the bearer of bad news a lot of times.
Usually, you can make it work, everybody sits down.
Also, like I said, with residential projects, I'm happy that we're able to help people a lot with those, too, so it balances out somewhat. Unfortunately, people that are unhappy are more vocal than happy people in this life.
Quietly, quietly happy.
Any more questions? You just feel done?
I think pretty much.
Do you have a comment here, you didn't really operate verbally about the foreclosed property?
Oh, yeah. We have, we have over 100 foreclosed properties in town limits right now, and of course, nobody's cutting their grass, the banks have maintenance companies that cut their grass, and a lot of times, they don't keep up with it, they'll cut it once every 14 days. Of course, as you know, if anybody cut the grass this summer, you know, with the rain, it's been, you know, there's a lot of cutting. So we've had to have public works take care of some of these properties, and then we lean the properties for, you know, the fee that we charge, public works, you know, charges for doing that. Some of the property, the maintenance companies are good, some of them aren't. I, you know, from what I've been told by some people, these are going to be out there for a while, because the banks don't want to release them all at once, because if they flood the market with these properties, the values go down. So it's, it's a constant thing, sometimes they're getting broken into, you know, the neighbors are never happy with them, because it's, you know, even if the grass gets cut and the weeds get trimmed, they're not, it's not quite the same, this is somebody living there to take care of it, so it's a, it's just not a good situation. A lot of them are being sold, but it's, you know, not a majority of them, it's just going to take time. We've tagged, we hang tags on them, because unfortunately, with some of them, the banks, the first thing they do is cut the power, and you know, with the underground water around here, some pumps not going to run. We've got a few of them that, like the one over on.
Melbourne.
Melbourne, that the basement's full up with water, then you get mold throughout the whole house. That one over there is, it's probably, probably cheaper to tear the house down. We have another bed on South Tardan, people want 22. They just get, some of the banks don't do that, but some of them still do, and it just, it creates a mess, you know. So we're, we put on all of them, if we keep a list, we have a list in our data bank of all these properties, and we go out and hang a placard on them that, you know, haveable repairs necessary, and they call us before doing any work, because they're not supposed to, but some of these real estate companies get ahold of these properties, and they go in, we caught one over on Courtney, now they've got a for-sale sign on it, but we still have it, they're marked. They went in the basement and pulled drywall off and just started painting white paint on the studs to cover up. I don't know if it was mold or not, but it was a way to test it very easily, because I communicate with a structural hygienist and stuff. And I called a guy to have me get in there and check it, and he never called me back, and now they've got a for-sale sign on it. And, you know, we're trying to prevent these properties from just being covered up and flipped over and sold to someone with full mold, and I'm.
But not all of them, you wouldn't know, because if it's like a short sale and they're paying cash, they don't have to have that, to have an inspection coming in.
No, I mean, yeah, typically, a lot of them, of course, they see our sign, they don't want anything to do with us, you know, so, you know, we're trying to help them and make them aware that there's a potential problem there, and, you know, they sidestep us, so it's hard to deal with. Surprised that there's, you wouldn't know there's so many until you start compiling lists.
I would, I would knock on a lot of doors. Knocked on a lot of your stickers and that kind of thing.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Take care.
Ashen, would you please hear about the feasibility for house on supply?
Jeff.
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 The, the board's aware that Mr. Benner had suggested utilizing Cow Palm and the DNR Palm as the additional raw water supply to the plant, and in order to, you know, approach the water supply, folks, about that, we need to have a feasibility study done to determine whether there would be any advantage to the town, and I don't know if the cost would be.
Sorry.
Oh, I don't know what the cost would be involved in actually transforming it, but it will involve quite a bit of negotiation with the regulatory agencies, probably Corps of Engineers and MDE principally. So I asked KCI to do a feasibility study principally for the hydraulics, in order of what can we, what's the benefit to the town in terms of improving the amount of water available to the plant, could it be a buffer zone, as Ken suggested, or would it create some problems for us? But anyway, Ashen's here with a proposal to do that feasibility study.
The, the study mainly includes hydraulic analysis for the, for the, for the pump supply, and also it will include some preliminary discussion with the environmental agencies. I want to create this Google map in just, that's kind of created by, that's created by Louis, I kind of already use it, it's a good one to explain. So here's a big outbreak. Yeah, I'll, I'll see here.
Oh, there, I'll be like your Van.
Okay, thank you.
I'll be Van.
Here is the, the big outbreak, and that's like the, the mouth of the reservoir, where the raw water was taken. And then this is the reservoir supplying the water, raw water to the out-and-water treatment tank. And there are four ponds located south of the reservoir. There, there are interconnections between the reservoir and the, and the ponds, and there are also discharge located south of, of the, of the four ponds, and the water, the discharge water eventually goes to the big outbreak downstream. So this pond, the, the pond supplier, currently, this is only kind of supply route from the big outbreak to the treatment tank. And the pond, pond supplier will be kind of using this, this interconnection between the reservoir and the, the Howard Pond, and then construct some interconnection between the ponds, currently, there's no interconnection. Currently, there's no interconnection between them. So, for, for using this route, the interconnection, those interconnections are going to be constructed. And then, the, then the, the water will be directed to the, either the water or some other connections through pipe in from the third pond or the fourth pond. We had, so that's pretty much kind of the alternative supply and route with the pond supply.
And the, and the race would be isolated, could be isolated. So, rather than straight as a raceway supplied to the treatment plant, we'd bypass the raceway if, if we, if it was bowled that way and then go through the ponds.
Right, right, it can be bowled off and be isolated.
But the, one of the important things that KCI has to determine is the, you have to determine the invert of that end, that forty-eight inch pipe at the treatment plant. Because any water above that invert will be available to the plant, obviously. And below that won't do you any good because you can't get to, get to the plant. So, if you want to look at the theory of the pond, of the larger pond, the cow pond, there is a couple acres, whatever it is. And the depth of that pond, the only, the only really depth that matters is the depth to the invert of that treatment plant. Because if it was fifty feet deep, it wouldn't make any difference because you only use the first three feet of it, is what I'm trying to get at. And so, one of the things they have to do is a hydraulic analysis to determine the volume of water that would be in that much space, and it wouldn't be a much greater space than the race, obviously. And those two ponds combine that, and that tells you how much more water you would need. And additionally, there has to be an exchange of that water. Because that water will form, as I told Alishi in a email today, I would consider it an arid soup. Because that water gets warm in the winter, I mean, the summer. And with the geese stirring up and fishing and everything, it's pretty mucky stuff. So, if you can actually have water go through it, it'll clear it up. So, we have to account for that. We can do that by combining the roughly million gallons a day demand by plant for output. And a bypass, there's a bypass bolt next to the plant too, that you can help get water backed into the big outbreak, it's a bypass. Now, the theory of this is, is a pretty good theory because he thinks that if we have, in some cases, a storm event where you have real high turbid water, and theoretically, you could fall back on this for a few days and your other water clears up. So, that gives you a raw water supply that would be an advantage to you. Also, the theory is, Ken's, is that we have a contamination issue and you can catch it. You might be able to catch it in that buffer zone before it gets to the plant. And that could be a very complex thing because you don't know where it's coming from. The watershed for the treatment plant is roughly sixty square miles, it's a big area. Half of that is roughly twenty, twenty-five square miles in Chester County, Pennsylvania. So, when you combine that with the, the watershed in Cecil County, that's a very big area that supports the Big Oak Creek and that portion of Big Oak Creek, that we use for our raw water supply for the treatment plant. So, we basically need to have a hydraulic study because when we go speak with MDE, water supply, and the core people primarily, MDE, I would think, water supply side. You basically need to have some type of plan that could demonstrate to them that this is an advantage to the public at the public water supply, you know, rather than just simply arbitrary decision you're making. So, that's why we engaged KCI to create this proposal for the board to consider.
Our proposed surveys will first include the survey around the four ponds and also get the key elevation at the interconnection. And also, we'll get the, the bottom profile of the pond. That way, we can determine the volume, like the storage volume of, of those ponds. And also, we'll do the.
I'm sorry, don't we already have the dimensions of the pond? Don't we have the pond survey?
I think you did, you had done survey.
I, I don't think.
I did a Google one, I just did a simple thing. If you, if you pull up in Google Earth and you use the ruler and you just go there, I figured, I estimated, I don't have it here, but I estimated the square, I think it's like four acres.
Yeah, there, there's way to kind of estimate like the, just the pressure and the area. Yeah, yeah, and also like the, also the depths, like the, the depths of the, at different locations.
Right. The, also, Ken, Ken was talking about, I remember asking him taking out, it's twenty, asking what the separation was. And he said it was twenty foot wide. I mean, we were.
What was twenty foot wide?
Some of these, these connections between the ponds was twenty foot wide. And, and we were talking about taking those out would add an extra week's worth of water to the town.
Samuel, the.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
That's what, that's what I was talking about, was expanding the pond because it accomplished a couple different things. Instead of just connecting pond to pond to pond, you actually take out that lane in there. You combine all the ponds, his estimation and, and rudely estimated that it would add somewhere around a week's worth of extra water to the town. And that's like the situation, which also would alleviate some of the, the issues with, with artesian and the water. If there's a problem upstream, we can, we can turn it off.
One of, if, 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 that's not that bad an idea, I don't know from a regulatory point of view what, what that, what that involves. But they can amend their scope to do that. Take the, we were talking about.
That'll be kind of first, be a discussion with the environmental agencies. Because they're all kind of in the wetland area, also in flatland. So, any kind of.
Why aren't we dredging that right now?
We're dredging this section from here to, yeah, to here.
Have we ever dredged cow pond?
Never.
And we have no idea how deep it is?
Yeah, it's about probably, I don't know if it's four feet deep or not, it's not very deep. Yeah, but we had drought. It might be, but it's not a real deep, they're going to find out, aren't you?
From the survey, we'll find out.
We'll know exactly because, because it's very shallow, is it, on very ground, it's very shallow out to the sound.
And these were the ones that were the hatchery ponds at one time, right?
No, the hatchery ponds are.
Are up above.
Yeah, both of them.
And there's also.
Ten of them are both.
Right, right. And then we had talked with Ken about that, about combining those at one time also. And then there's a pipe that's running down from right by, right by the, the dog fields. There's a pond right there by the dog field.
Yeah, that's the community pond. I don't know.
There's a, there's a pipe running from there.
Hatchery ponds don't connect with that pond. Hatchery ponds actually discharge to the creek. Because when they just, they have to drain those ponds out, they have a permit, discharge permit, they discharge the creek. They don't discharge to that pond. The pond in East Meadow, part of the dog park, actually draws from water from above. And you go up to the lane, gravel lane, it goes back to Elraven, and it drains down from that area. And I sent, remember I sent the pictures in for the big storm, show the pool, you know, because it comes down to Gully to, you know, Glen Mary Heights and discharges.
There's, there's not a connection to have that one pond right there down. There, there's, yeah, I swear, I stood right on top of that. At that pond right there, I swear that there's.
And next to it's a.
Is it called an intake? Yeah, there's an intake, it's almost hidden right there. I asked Ken about it, he said that that, what he can determine from that pond down, it looks like the ground has sunk it down a little bit, but maybe there was a pipe at one time that's now collapsed. But that, that pond connected with these other ponds. I don't think so.
I think Ken was talking, I mean, he thought it might be a surge pond during storms. He was thinking that, you know, like during the storms, back up the surge.
What, did we ask Ken to come?
I don't know, I sent an email out, but I don't know if he was coming for this. Because he had already presented his recommendation, this is just a follow-up for the, for the building study. What we can have, he can come to the next meeting before you make a decision on this. But if you want to change the scope to include, did you say you couldn't take this out?
You mean, any construction you to kind of just, in the wetland, it would be kind of alternation of, it is considered alternation of the wetlands? It's not like, it's not possible, but it.
It's a possibility.
It's, it's, it's possible, it's a possibility, right.
And we're not, we're not changing the, we're not changing the dynamic of the wetlands. That it's surrounded by, we're only increasing the size of the pond.
I don't know, when I was there with MP that day, they, anything you touch is changing the dynamics as far as they're concerned.
And there's also a flatland in this area, it's also alternation of the flatland, like if you kind of take an volume or add some volume. It's, 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 it's some question to the environment agency, we just need to kind of start the discussion with them. And it's possible, and sometimes they require certain types of the wetland mitigation planning. So, it's, it's just a kind of step-by-step, like, discussion and mitigation. And then before get the permit to.
The, the interconnection by a pipeline would be minimally. Yeah.
I get it.
And that may, that may, that would give you, that would give you your water supply. But it wouldn't create a regulatory issue for you to deal with as large.
Right, right, it's like.
You're, you're asking to stay out till midnight, not three in the morning. I get, I get what's, what's going on here. It would be, I think we should shoot for a star and hopefully land on the moon there. Because it would, it would increase the town's capacity of water. And or especially in an isolation type of situation if there's a, a problem in the stream.
But we'll know that.
That, yeah, it's, it's like when you know the emergency happened, like something, what time you would start to know like the, the, some, some emergency situation, like contamination happened in the, in the creek and the response time between them. So, I better, the reporter has get into the pond. But the, the pond will provide longer retention time and more storage volume for the water supply. And we'll do the survey and then we'll do the wetland delineation. And then the, the feasibility study is mainly hydraulic. And we do, we use a, use a mapping software to see directly by gravity whether the water can be supplied to the water treatment plant with adequate amounts. And also, like Luis brought up today about the water quality, potential issue in the pond. And I suggest since San Juan, they're monitoring the influence flow from the raceway. They, they do test and every day test the turbidity, out of energy. And, and then they can also do, take maybe take some samples from the pond at the same time just to kind of compare the turbidity.
See, yeah, okay.
Yeah, so that's, that's a way that you can kind of compare the, the water quality. And, and also like by the analysis, it will also kind of determine the turnaround time of the water in the pond. Because you don't want it to stay in the pond if it's kind of a relatively stagnant situation for too long. That will kind of, the water quality could diminish with the longer, longer time, longer retention time.
According to the number of east there present.
So, that's a, and then if it's feasible, we'll work on the concept plan to put all the information together, show the proposed connection, interconnection between the pond and show the, show the supply route. And also show the environmental feature like wetland, flatland, and all the survey, the invert elevation showing on the plan. And then we'll, we'll request a meeting with the, with the environmental agent. Like back in May, we had a site, site meeting with environmental agents, agents from MDE and also Army Corps. We kind of preliminary discussed this, but at that time, it's very conceptual. So, and they did kind of brought up some environmental concerns since it's wetland area. And for the four ponds, they actually suggested don't, like three of the ponds, they're, they're considered wet ponds. And the fourth one, it is considered dry pond, even though there's a kind of a channel with the stream going through. And they suggested do not touch on that pond because there is kind of all kinds of, yeah.
It's what? It's sacred.
It's wetland, it's dry pond. Yeah.
If somebody came wanting to open the valve, it would be full of water.
Not anymore.
But it, it was right there, just, wouldn't be, I mean, I have been trying to contact the gentleman from MDE, what she's been saying, he's been emailing me, and Army Corps of Engineers to get them here to discuss with the group. Because I found fascinating that day when we were out there, walking, everything. And they just can't seem to get the group together. One's busy, one's not, but if, would it be better if we actually were able to discuss with them first? To see, you know, with, I know being there was, was great, but like questions that everyone has, having them here before doing all these studies, we're looking at almost thirty thousand dollars in fees. And if it's something that we know we can't do just because there is a wetland in the center, that's something, maybe if, I don't know, Luis should contact them or Dan, who got that group together that day?
We, we coordinated the, the site meeting. It's, they, it's like the response I got from them is like, it's possible, but it's just like, it's kind of preliminary. For, so we had some kind of very discussion on the surface, but not, yeah. But I can, I can also like follow up with them, just kind of check like what kind of permit could be involved? And, and what is your concern? And what can we do to kind of ease that concern or like make some mitigation measurements to? What, what could be the mitigation plan we can do? Yeah. And that, that is actually kind of included as part of the, of the proposal, like preparing the, the concept plan. And use that plan to, since we, we kind of have, have, have this, will have this proposed connection. So, they will say where the construction will taking place. And then that will help them to assess the impact to the environment.
In doing something like a, a review, we're asking the state to make a judgment call on, can we do it on theory? I let it come out right. Instead of spending third, I agree with you, just spend us thirty thousand dollars, you talk to the state and say, look, this is what we want to do. You've been to our town a couple times now, you know, can I do Google Maps? Can I give you something that, that gives a basic outline of what we were attempting to do? And then should we take it further than that instead of spending thirty thousand dollars? Because most of the things, most of the things you can do, right, on, on Google Maps, you can figure it out. It's not going to cost as much as what you're saying. Then if they say we need to get down in the weeds, then, and it's a possibility? I mean, then I think that we spend the money, take a look at the cost savings that we're supposed to be saving.
Yeah, I agree with you, I think maybe the follow-up further, since we had the site meeting last time, it's the first step to go. The, the, the proposal was more, more budgeted because it also includes survey needed for the hydraulic study, like whether the flow can get to the treatment plant.
Right.
Yeah, so.
So, it's something at a smaller scale before we go ahead and spend all this money. It's coming out right, right? Because nobody's like taking a hat and agreeing or disagreeing or engaging with what I'm saying.
See, I recommend finding out how much capacity you actually looking at, is it, you know, is the chief of the suite, that the chief can find out. So, you know, depending on how much you're really looking at, because if your, your plant's running one, 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 two million gallons a day, you know, how much storage capacity, you store three hundred thousand gallons of heavy wood, mid-heavy wood, the whole, what you're going to.
Right, if you want to save, save the fees, you don't have to do it at all.
Yeah.
The raceway has served the water treatment plant since, since initially nineteen thirty, when the first one was built, nineteen eighty something. When the second one was built without any issues.
But it's starting to get worse there, and at that, not the last door, but prior or a couple before that, it did come up rather high in.
Oh, it flooded many times, many times.
That's the case, you know, if, if the water.
It'll, it'll flood over this and the ponds, that they're going to, it can, in a bad flood or something. It'll, it'll flood over this and the ponds that there ain't gonna, it can, in a bad, like Floyd or something.
The question's turbidity, what can happen is you can actually shut off the water plane and then your water can just, you know, can compound as the water going back in. Or if, it's a pressure, if there's a question of water, you can add a couple of block, you're like, no, that doesn't get the sediment out.
Well, you, you talk about, you know, when the water's turbid, it costs a lot of money, the force costs a lot of money.
That way you can, you can actually shut the plane off.
That's why we have.
I, I know. Well, like, well, and that's like, I agree with Dan saying and what Commissioner Ray Ream, you know, if this is going to serve a purpose and if we have somewhere where we're going to hold backup water, where we, you know, we'll have that for the future, then it's worth investing in. But if it's something we're not going to use and it's just costing money, but we're not saving money somewhere else.
Well, first, to be frank, the first reason we're dredging the raceway is because of the recommendation, if I can, that increases storage capacity in the raceway. So we're, we've got the two hundred twenty seven thousand dollar C D V G grant in combination with, uh, our money to do that and we're doing it. So you will increase the capacity of the raceway to supply raw water to the treatment plant and not even do any of this. Um, so this is like another, uh, dimension of, of expanding on the raw water supply. In addition to the supply we receive from the Big Elk and, and the, uh, raceway.
Cause the other, the other, the other angle here was, uh, decreasing the amount of water that Artesian is supplying us because we would have, uh, we'd have something, we'd have more in reserve.
Decreasing, you never can decrease the two hundred fifty thousand.
Two hundred fifty thousand gallons a day.
Like contract.
But, well, that contract when, then when that con, when that.
When does it expire?
It's two thousand eighteen, isn't it?
Yeah. But you always have, you always have to have it. Cause our water treatment plant permit requires us to have a backup water supply for the treatment plant. So you'll have to.
Doesn't matter where it comes from though. And the way I've read that, it doesn't matter where it comes from. It doesn't matter if it comes from United, it's United Water, right? Or Artesian or, or storage, or storage.
No. It can't come from the Big Elk Creek. That, that's where, that's why we had to bypass it. This is that the Big Elk Creek, uh, was contaminated and the largest plant, uh, was down. We needed to back up water supply. So it could, we can't, we can't, we can't, but United can't supply the amount of water that Artesian can.
We had a reservoir that, that was standalone, that would not be contaminated by the Big Elk Creek, that would suffice Maryland's law, would it not?
No. Um, their backup water supply doesn't relate to the amount of storage you have. It relates to drought. If you have a drought for an extended period of time, you have to have a walk, you have to have a supply of water available.
What's that next period of time? Thirty days? Fourteen days?
Actually it's defined in the permit, but I didn't take what that is. Might be longer than that.
Cause I, I thought that was part of this plan also.
But I don't think.
We were talking about different wells.
But now we're talking about, if you use Howard, if you use Cal Pond, if you took the depth of water in that pond, tightens the four acres or whatever, at the depth of the invert of the pipe, you won't have as much water as you think.
Agreed. I understand.
And it's with last year for a week.
Although if you take out those, just by quick calculation, what Ken was saying, it would add an extra week if you took out the, the, the stuff in between. Then we also have ponds up, up, up above and then there, there's other wells around. My.
You can't get more wells though. It'll give you more.
I understand the straw and the cup theory. I, I understand. I understand what you're saying. Um, my thing is, is, I understand Maryland's requirements to do something. I'm still having a hard time wrapping my mind around. How do we get away from spending a crap load of money, uh, with Artesian? We, isn't there a way that we can do it ourselves? Isn't there a way that we can do it ourselves? That, that's, that's the hard thing that I'm having a problem with, that wrapped in my head right now. Is, can we create a reserve of water that, that takes care of, of Maryland's requirement? And not, uh, not cost us residents the, the amount of money that we're spending.
If you had, if you could develop a reservoir of water that would, um, I, I don't know, put a loop in, uh, central contamination, because it would be the same source of water. That's, that's, that's your problem. Your Elk and Water Treatment Plant gets water from the Big Elk Creek and there's no other source of water where it sounds like you can have an alternative source of water.
Unless you have ponds. Why not?
Well, the ponds though are supplied with the Big Elk Creek.
Although they're not flowing right in, you, you would have.
Actually they are, they are, they, they come in the raceway and there's a pipe there made by the rebellion and that's where the water comes in. That's, raceway supplies water to those ponds.
I thought it was only one. Wasn't there a valve?
No.
Pipe to the, the ward there. But that's how, that's where it gets its water from. And then it overflows on the other side.
I can't.
We, we can go out there. I guess it's easier this is going to do it.
It is, I tell you.
I believe what you're saying. I'm just, I, I just don't like, I just don't like the way that it is. So I'm gonna look at, I'm gonna look, I'm gonna pick it up and I'm gonna look at it at different angles to figure out a way that we can accomplish the same thing, that we don't have to rely on somebody else. This way, somebody else isn't dictating what we have to do. And I understand that we have Maryland dictates what we have, what we have to do, but I don't like that another company is just saying, this is how much you want to use, this is how much it's going to cost. And then I, I just don't like, I, I just don't. And I would like to figure out a way.
When we, when we went into the agreement with Artesian, wasn't necessarily something we liked to do.
Agreed.
It was something we had to do. Um, because we, uh, we looked at United and, and they, they couldn't supply the water.
We don't continue with them. And so you, we only kicked the can further down the road. So if we're not having these discussions now and we have them all of a sudden, we have it in two thousand seventeen, we're in a contract, we could have done this back then. I'd rather have a conversation now and try to figure out a way that if we only extend the contract two years and then we're, we're by ourselves for three years or don't extend it at all. Or we have to, but at some point in time, the conversation has to have, how can we be a standalone town and not, not rely on somebody else?
Standing on town for many, many, many years.
Until the state, right?
So they recognize that during the drought two thousand two, I think, um, that we couldn't meet our flow by at the plant and we had to shut our plant down.
Right.
Uh, because they dictating a, a flow by in the creek. If we can't meet that and shut our plant down, we don't have water for our people.
I, I get all that. I understand all of that.
I have a, I have a reservoir.
Well, I think we should look at the state requirements and then if something you wanna, because that, you know, we discussed this before was, this was the only way we could do it. We didn't have, everything was coming from the Big Elk Creek, you know? Um, so to get the actual state requirements on what you need for your backup water might help in anyone's conversation.
As far as this, or we can't make a decision today. I like to have a smaller, what they exactly would set, a smaller type of, uh, output of money. And, cause you, thirty grand, we're betting thirty grand on, on something. I'd rather bet smaller money. What do you, what do you want to do here though? Not do it, not do this?
I prefer to do it.
So many things in question as far as like what's allowed and what is, um, what, what's the purpose for all this based on right now is where I'm stuck in every.
Oh, I understand.
The, the purpose, if this is going to be feasible for the town of Elk and the cost factor and based on, it really relies on K C I study right now, whether or not we can be able to move from, um, forward with this. And if we, we as a group, we're going to, we're going to go ahead and have a buy, have a buy-in, engage with this project. I'm, I'm writing down, I'm not sure what, what we should be doing because I don't have enough facts of what we're, what we're.
Well, you don't have to make a decision. It's just a little research, we're just discussing and allow a little Q and A here with respect to, uh, concerns. Because, um, my instincts are giving the feedback from the board that I take a trip down to N D E and meet with, uh, water supply people. You can't get that group up here. They, they won't send all the people up here, but you set up an appointment with me, actually you can sit with three or four of them and they all have the room, a little discipline, you know what I mean?
And that's what I realized. There was so much conversation.
They'll say, they'll say, uh, typically what they'll say is that, oh, we need some definitive information here to make any decision about what we'll do. They could agree on the concept and I'll come back to the concept. Might be our, but they want to see something, what we can do. I can guess at how much water we'll have and what we can do with it. I can't give them any really details about the hydraulics because I wouldn't know the hydraulics, you know, about what this is being for now. Why don't you let me do that? I'll, I'll set with my with your water supply people and. I know, I know, I know the water supply people pretty well. I'm sure if that, no, they'll let me come forward.
Thank you.
Sorry, thanks, Steve. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Less controversial, right?
I think it's not that, um, and some other people ought to be here for this, you know? We understand your point, but it's kind of, right? Basically, uh, you gotta move out, we're gonna save the world and try to, so people come together is almost impossible. Because all the guys are making decisions, but they don't want to come together, they don't make that here.
As a state, I get it.
Okay, all of us should have, um, and I don't know whether you received an email from Robbie or not, but let me start with the meeting with what he has sent us. After many hours of thinking about viewing and reviewing and experiencing our parking situation, I believe that we should not enforce any of the parking meters on limit parking until the end of the year. This will give us additional information to make a better informed decision. Information that I need is to gain whether or not this parking spot near the courthouse and hospital will be abused by employees. Right now, I can only guess. Also know that after four P M. there are too many open spaces and it's free. I believe that we should resign our parking lots to state we have free parking. We want to encourage patients to park there. Also believe we need to enforce other parking issues like bar hydrants, parking to the, on the yellow line and handicap polish, to name a few. Maybe our parking enforcement officers should be an additional sworn officer dedicated to this job. They should patrol and walk all shopping centers throughout the town. This would give us a safer feel to our community. I will support the consensus of the board for whatever decision that is made from this meeting. Hopefully he'll be here, he sets up like five thirty, I think, not P K's, but that's where we can get started.
Let's make a statement. I went to Happy Grace just this morning and right by the hospital where everybody works and whatever, there's no parking meters, no problem. Be parking in, going into the hospital. Um, we need to find out what exactly they're doing, Northeast is doing. I mean, we're, we're dealing with these parking meters so, so much that, that, like you said, it just terrors people from coming downtown. But yet I look at these other towns and they have no problem whatsoever with nobody or parking of enforcers. There's no body parking in front of the handicap that, I mean, the same thing that we're dealing with right now.
We, I'd say that they don't.
I know Northeast does not enforce.
Yeah, one thing they.
Is that?
Courthouse.
I talked to.
Courthouse is. And there's a fusion of some people in the room and they don't come in every day.
Um, I know the mayor talked to Mayor's name, um, and they do not enforce parking in town in Northeast. Um, how do you raise us not enforce parking either? I don't believe, I've been in a couple of different areas, but, um, I, I'm not sure.
They, they have a parking enforcer that does, and I'm not sure what he enforces. I didn't ask him that. That's often down for area order.
Right.
Um, they do have one on payroll and making know that he's out enforcing. Um, I did ask him around the hospital. I didn't ask him downtown or anything like that. And I've been to, you know, I, I didn't park. Like the, uh, McGregor's and stuff, I didn't park on Main Street. I go down out back and park and there's, there's nothing there. So I don't know what he would be enforcing.
Where I just went to me, there was, it was along the street going to the main street. There was nothing there. So, but I, there's just a couple of places that I parked and I knew where I was as well.
Yeah, McGregor's you go down, I go down. For tidings park, you know, back.
But you bring up a good point and Earl, I, I agree with you, but maybe the courthouse could be a problem. That could be. Is a problem because if you, if you didn't have the meters there, which we do, you know, a person's in court all day or what have you. He talked, you know, trying to get a car to be moved out of there. You don't have some type of regulatory person to go around and force.
Well, we haven't had anyone for the past two months.
That's true.
And I'm the first person they call or come in my office complaining and I have not heard anything. Um, and I did talk to Dr. Lewis at the hospital and he said, if we choose to do this and not enforce right now, he will get his security guard on duty and have them go around more often.
And they have a badge in their car that they have, that works for the, um, for the hospital. Uh, and like I said, I only used like to call names of people where they're working, but I talked to Dr. Lewis and he had his, uh, over, um, security person actually sit out of a day or two and watch the way they park, who has the, the parking sticker or tag on their mirror. And he actually knows their tag number, whatever, and he has to remove it. But the thing is, what I'm saying is, could the courthouse be set up for some kind of a, the same kind of a, uh, parking for employees? I think most employees park under, in their garage.
No, they have to park next to the college, next to the college. They have, they bought that parking.
If, if you, I think there are a lot of issues in the parking, you know, have, in this conversation with a couple of people. One of my observations are, and you can verify this yourself, drive down with Hal, by, by baseball fields. And you'll see a lot of cars parked along the baseball fields. Not in a lot, just along the baseball fields. Jam, jam, every which way. Um, and, and they're parking there, they're largely employees that are parking there rather than in the lot because they don't want to walk out. But go, there are other places in town where that's also happening. Some of it is on South Street and some of it is on Main Street. In some places, main east of South Street. A lot of those vehicles were parked like that because, and then there's two hour limit, there's no, there are no meters, but there's still two hour limit. The others parked there all day and all. And some of that goes on, on East Main between South and, um, Fort Brothers was that, along that main street, they were retail stock. It's, a lot of that goes along there too. I'm not sure quite as much because there, there was in that area some enforcement. I know that that's one of the issues related, related to the courts. First of all, would be, well, people coming to go to court. And they're largely in town unless you see the same vehicle from out of state park there for a couple of days, it usually means that person got locked up. And their car gets towed when, when somebody comes and gets it.
Well, even though, I hate to go this route, but you've got more law enforcement parking there than anything. And they should have a designated area for their law enforcement cars instead of just parking along the, uh, Main Street. And they said, when I say they, I'm gonna just play, play, uh, straight and blunt, they park there and they have to be in there for three or four hours. So when they move, the next person's parked for law enforcement hours and they were to get a ticket, what's the difference between them parking there and, and the law enforcement? So you have a, a double standard there just because the law enforcement don't need to park there. They gotta apply by the laws, the same citizens.
I, I actually, um, I, I would thank you for the, for the actual budget, but I, um, had asked Steve to do some other looking into. Um, for two thousand thirteen, fourteen, we received twenty four thousand approximately one hundred fifteen dollars in parking meters, that's exactly now. And twenty nine thousand three hundred and forty five dollars in parking fines. So that was a total of fifty three thousand four hundred and sixty dollars.
the total revenue was approximately twenty-three thousand dollars for all the enforcement in town. Um, you know, I would, I did check into the company also, um, that we have, and I was hoping Dan would stay, uh, because I was told that they are obsolete, but I did find online.
Well, I thought most of them.
Duncan Eagle C K.
Not in town.
And, um, what's that?
Go ahead. Sorry. Didn't mean to interrupt.
No, but they, they were here, and, but there's different model numbers, so I don't know what the model number was. Um, and I, I didn't do anything. But, you know, we, every year we have bagged the meters for the holidays, anyway, which is coming up quicker than we expected. So, with what the mayor wrote, if we just held off till January and got the information he's looking for, I, I would tend to go that route, personally.
And hold off on just enforcement?
Just enforcement.
Cause we've already started, uh, hiring people, eight or a person?
No.
Cause of board, I'm.
I would, I would prefer to hire somebody, if you want to bag the meters, bag the meters for a little while. I mean, I look at it actually a little differently. I, I could be swayed either way. It's a revenue source, um, we hire somebody, um, hopefully we keep some continuity downtown. You know, when this first came up, at least, brought to my attention was because the businesses downtown would hurt because there's parking meters, but there's no parking meters in the business district. So that became, that became void to me, it didn't exist anymore, then it, it came back up. But I think that we're missing the bigger picture. The parking meters, to me, is, is we're trying to, trying to treat, um, we're trying to treat it, uh, what's wrong?
Benito, I said you went to Anthony's.
All right. Um, we're trying to treat the symptom of a disease and not the disease itself. The disease itself is getting businesses downtown. The, and the parking meters are irrelevant to that equation, in my eyes. What we need is, is to have so strong of a town, New York, and I'll use them, they do have a captive audience, they got a college there, um, we need to have it so popular that people are wanting to come downtown, and there's no parking meters there anyhow. And we're only talking, we're talking, it's a quarter per half an hour, right? Am I wrong, it's a quarter per half an hour?
Uh, a quarter for, that's correct.
So we're talking fifty cents an hour, we're talking a dollar for two hours, is what we're talking about, is these long discussions, instead of actually talking about the bigger problem of, of business. You, you know what I'm saying? Cause it's not hurting business by not having, or, or having parking meters. What it's hurting is, we do have, that is a slight revenue source.
Well, I think, you know, um, we have this in front of us, I believe Michelle put together, and it shows you where the meters are, I don't know if anyone's looked at it yet, where the enforced parking, um, and we haven't even looked at that yet, because, you know, right downtown, most of the streets are two hour parking. But if we look at this and say, does North Street really need enforced parking? It never did. And the only reason why we enforced it was because of the coffee shop woman did not want anyone parking in front of her business. And what happened when she got that? She ended up, nobody wanted to go there because they were angry that she didn't want the parking on the street. So, um, you know, that's why North Street ended up getting put into the code as being on reinforced streets. So I think we do need more time and look at what this says, and see what areas need to be, you know, here's the parking times on the back, with ones that are limited for two hours, Bridge Street, Cathedral, Mackle, Main Street, North Street, Salyly, West High, um, and they're all mapped out there, and special permit parking, which again, here we have streets downtown, and then we have Turnquist, one development. So, we really need to look at this.
But Dan has something to do with it, cause you addressed whatever you wanted to put in.
Oh, Steve, I'm just saying, I had asked you the, the type of meter.
Yes.
Parking meter.
We have seven that we took from, um, the parking lot, yeah.
Okay, um.
Duncan.
Duncan Eagle C K, but there's different models, because these models are still, um, available, but I don't know if any of those were.
I'd have to research.
Okay.
I, I don't know.
All right.
I have one in my car.
Oh, don't, don't, we're not getting there now, I just.
Oh, I put that.
See if they work hard.
Good one, girl.
That was all I, that was all.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. I would have been, if there was one.
But, um, but I think that's something that needs to be looked at as well. If the hospital, you know, needs to be enforced there, does, you know, why the courthouse need to be enforced, does South Street, in my eyes, no? Um, that was brought up several months ago, I think Charlie, you might have brought that up.
I've been bringing it up for about six months.
You know, that whole, that whole area on South Street, nobody's there, so why enforce it? I mean, it's just, so.
They have issued a ticket there, I don't think there's nobody around.
Oh, well, maybe, I know that, but I'm just saying.
But even when he was, wasn't there was nobody there.
This is what, this is what is written now, so this is what we need to look at, is what's written in our, you know, ordinance, oh gosh, we should.
One, one of the questions, one of the questions I wanted to ask about, uh, the hospital property, if they have a Rover, and they have a security guy that's building their parking lot, and why not include their whole hospital property, which is, I know the town belongs to High Street, but yet that still is the parking for the hospital, and, you understand what I'm saying, well, I'm getting that, I mean.
Yes, that's enforced.
Yeah, I mean, we, we're, we're worried about enforcement for this area with the meters, and it's the hospital that, um, and again, I'm not trying to blame them, it's just that people are parking to go in and out of hospital, but yet, we're trying to enforce, uh, the timeframe in there, which should be the hospital's responsibility for the hospital property.
I agree with you, but the, that, that is our jurisdiction. That wouldn't be the hospital.
I understand they have somebody there, but they don't need it there.
And I'll tell you, I have actually been at the hospital several times in the past month, and I have been able to pull up on the street and park, and even not have to go in the garage. I don't know why, but I have.
How long were you there for?
Hour tops.
I've probably been there ten to fifteen times, and I have not had a problem either, either on High Street or the side streets.
Or the side.
I've, I've always found.
During the evening or during the day?
During the day as well.
During the weekend.
But street or in the garage for an hour?
Weekends are pretty intense.
And the only, the only, I'm sorry.
Okay, go ahead.
The only thing that I've encouraged the board, and again, for me, uh, I, either way, if, if whatever it's going to be, it has to be for everybody, and I didn't know that there were streets, they're enforced and not enforced, it doesn't make any sense to me. You enforce all or you enforce none, to, in my eyes, uh, but it is a revenue source.
And it's.
I like that revenue source.
And, and the other side of the point here is, is that we employ, uh, we have an employee, employ somebody, be it part-time or not, um, also, revenue should go back up, and in my eyes, with, with hopefully more people coming downtown, it, it should go back up. Um, and, and again, I, I really don't want to, I mean, I know I have to dig down deep into the parking meter thing, but the bigger picture in my eyes is not parking meter into fines, it's how do we bring more businesses down here, that people aren't going to care if they're spending, uh, not even a dollar, it's fifty cents an hour to be here, and put it in there, you know, I mean, you know what I'm saying? It, I, we need to become, that's the discussion that we need to have.
Well, we want to become welcoming, is my version of that.
I just see it's not.
And, well.
Not welcoming is when Trish comes out of the post office and somebody wants to tap her on the rear end, that's not welcoming.
It's not welcoming when you come down for lunch, and because you're two hours and five minutes, you get a twenty-five dollar ticket.
Change it to three, change it to three hours.
And they don't want to come back, and we have artists giving art classes now that are three to four hours, Rob King to the marketing meeting, um, even our tattoo artist.
Is that in the evening?
Is that, no, they're during the day, they have both classes at all different times. Um, you know, the pottery place on Main Street, she does four hour classes.
Is there, is there a meter on Main Street?
It's two hour parking.
Two hour, change it to three hour.
So, and somehow he gets all over, he did, get all over town for those two hours. I tried to change it to three at one time, and that, we didn't pass that, but I, I really think we need to look at every street individually on this. Um, this is a great printout that Michelle did.
We talked about, I'm sorry, but you know, you, you, you go back a few years ago, and the same car that you see parked extended on Main Street used to park on South Street, so I'm just wondering why the switch. I mean, I know you pay a little bit of money on, with the meters, and now you see those same cars there, they even down beyond the church, people will go to the wall.
There was no, there hasn't been any enforcement on, on Main Street, that's east of South Street, there isn't, hasn't been. Because there are no meters, and they wouldn't go where there weren't the meters, just to enforce the throughout, just, whereas they, the meters there on South Street, they would enforce them.
The meters not getting, as I say, down, you know, the other part.
Once the enforcement started on South Street, you know, for real.
Right.
Then the speaker, you're correct, you're correct, and you saw exactly where the parking on South Street, all that, and then they moved their own car, and this is one closer to all of them.
Right.
And I see it, because of an office right there, it doesn't really directly affect me so much, because I have parking, off-street parking for my clients and my employees, but there are those who don't, and they have, you know, people that come to those offices, you have county offices, you have law offices, and they see their elderly and elderly clients who come and park in the sides of church, and they have them walk up, because this person, you know, who's employed in the courthouse, who parked there all day, and they just found the whole parking spaces.
And that's counterproductive, and I guess we need to find a way to entice them, as you're saying, to park along South Street, or if they're not, then, you know, the meter serves no purpose.
Right.
And that's still part of downtown.
And I'd like, I'd like a code enforcement officer, or a, I, I don't like the idea of a police officer, only because, because I would direct forty grand with those benefits of, you know, you're talking sixty, sixty, I know, than I would assume. But I do like somebody that's down around town, that at least, maybe looks like a police officer. Um, and, and or walks around at, uh, Big Al Mall, stuff like that, it just shows a presence, and then you have somebody that's walking around, people seem to be a little bit more, uh, mindful of what they do, when they think somebody's watching, or the possibility of watching. So I do, I do like somebody also walking around downtown, Big Al Mall, and anywhere else. Do you guys feel about that? Okay.
No, I, 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 I like the presence of an officer being around the community, I really do. I mean, it says a lot, and you hear people make statements just because there was someone walking around, and, um, let's face it, we need them. And we are short police officers, and if we are hiring, if there is available time for that person to be this person, that's also, it's a community officer. Um, I remember when, um, Medu Karak was here, was that like what he, cause he did a lot of off-street walking and parking lots. Yeah, because he really, people knew when he was there, he had a presence.
And I was two seconds away from answering, but you said, okay, I was thinking, I was thinking, Tom, which is a, a good point of having someone visible, and I agree with that, as far as like when you say, uh, someone like a police officer, I understand you're talking about the, uh, cost of the officer, officer's job and duties is, well, it's the same thing, except for they just have to allow time for an officer to walk by, or be down in that certain area. When you say about, um, getting someone who looks like a cop, that ain't gonna be no good if I have to arrest someone, I look like a cop, I can't do it. I wonder if, if anything, I would rather have a real police officer.
And the only thing I see is that they get pulled off, and, um, again, I, I think you hire two part-time person, uh, or people, um, and, and you have them rotating around town, uh, the part-time, what, what do you have to pay for benefits now, twenty, what's it, twenty hours?
They're, they're half-time people, they're, they're forty hours.
What, what do you, some hours, right?
Three thousand five hundred, you know about it.
Yeah, because we just pay social security, and you play, and then workers comp, you have to pay, of course. So where are your, as far as in the position of the status of hiring somebody, you're saying you're in the process of doing that?
At the last meeting, we're authorized to hire one person, so offer, I already sent a thing out to, uh, Pat Conley to initiate that process, he's not here, he's at the case convention, so I don't know what the status is.
That could always be in January, because you, the.
He'll take, you know, they have an interview, the biggest thing for them is the background, they have to do the background, takes the time.
So how do you do it, what the mayor has suggested, enforce, we should not enforce any of the parking meters? Or limit parking until the end of the year, when you can make a informed decision? Or how do you want to go with this?
I feel to go with the mayor's request here, and I really think we need to go book out, and we see what streets are what, and we go with the maps here that Michelle, and really look at this, and not just say because of this or because of that, we know we're generating twenty-three thousand dollars of revenue. So, at this, we did for two thousand thirteen, fourteen.
You generated fifty-three.
That actually a little more, because the fines.
Well, I had asked for what we paid for salary.
Oh, you're talking net?
Yeah, net, yeah, cause with the salary, that, that's what it came to. Um, so, I would really, my choice would be to look into this further, look at what's in our code book, and go with this couch that Michelle did, and see, maybe we do, you know, want to take off a road here, or Turnquist, or because it's one permanent area, um, and we don't have any other housing developments that are permanent part, for parking. And actually, if I can add into that too.
Sure.
If you don't mind, specifically Turnquist, um, they, they're the only neighborhood that has this type of thing now, of course, some of that revenue came from Turnquist, when Ed would go out there and enforce parking there, but on the other side of that is the cost, um, I can show you the files, a lot of paperwork associated with that to your parking program, but also too, we supply the parking stickers and visitor tags that hang in the windows of the, so there's a, um, a supply cost that's associated with that, and the cost that, of chaining and me administering that.
So there's something.
So there's something like that.
There's something. The government of polish, every, I mean, we're healing the ordinance.
No, not right now, I'm just saying.
You've got a lot of citizens out there, you probably want to.
Exactly, so, but I'm saying, we're, we're not looking further into this the way we should. What's written in the code book, what needs to be changed, that's our Bible.
I have to ask the question, why, why isn't it, it, it enforced as a whole, and why is it, why is there certain streets we don't enforce and other streets we do enforce? That doesn't make sense to me. Why don't you just, this is the rule, and this is not the rule, you know what I mean?
I guess over the years, that's what was put and changed into our.
I thought you enforced everything too.
We did not, Ed, and we, um, the meter.
How many of the house gates have happened where?
There's a lot.
Walmart. Walmart.
I got you.
That would still be part of.
I misunderstood, I misunderstood.
Yeah, things enforcement.
Okay, you're just, you put timelines on certain roads.
Mayor all that asked me to explain to the board, um, how compus their contractor works, but it sounds like that's very distance second to, to parking meter issue itself, so.
Oh, yeah.
But if anybody does that.
Yeah, I, I, I think you should.
But, like, you're talking about an issue that's really a primary point, it's not the mechanics of having.
Well, those, you know, what, um.
Comp.
Yeah, the service we use.
Yeah, comp.
Yeah, comp, I think, I think you should.
Well, I think compus is our, um, service.
Okay, you're just, you put timelines on certain roads.
Mayor Aldad asked me to explain to the board how Compus, our contractor works, but it sounds like that's very business-related to the parking meter issue itself. But if anybody does that.
Yeah, I, I think we should.
But, like you're talking about, the issue is really a primary point, it's not the mechanics of having...
Well, those still know what, yeah, the service we use.
Your Compus.
Yeah, Compus. I think, I think you should.
Well, the Compus is our service, our contractor, that tracks all of our parking tickets when the tickets are written. We have a copy, they come in every day, and they're data entered into Compus, the data. I can't remember their formal name. And all the tickets that have been written are tracked, all the payments against those tickets are tracked through Compus. And for that service that they provide, they get fifteen and a half percent of money collected, not the dollars of tickets written, but the money collected. And that is also a system that allows MPA to access Compus's database and get the outstanding tickets. Once they have a fine, the in-state tickets, and they would generate their letter to the, the vehicle owner that, you know, you have this unpaid ticket. And, you know, before you buy to this vehicle, you have to pay it, and by the way, thirty dollars for our efforts, the hour, meaning MPA. So, so from Compus, we get that service. We also have them send out delinquent out-of-state letters to the unpaid tickets. For their recommendation, their experience, we are not their only customer, is that once their ticket is three years old. The likely that they're collecting out-of-state tickets, if they're three years old, is minimal. So they recommend not waiting in line on sending that letter. They also, for their experience, the three letters is about maximum if they have a greatly diminished return on any efforts. But they charge us for that, only the postage, they do the latter, they mail it at a discounted rate, at the bulk mailing rate. And they charge us the actual postage. Again, of course, there is, and that, we do get money from that, so they get fifteen and a half percent of that. So, but that's, I don't know if you knew how that system works, that Compus does that for us for fee, for what they get paid for to provide that out-of-state letters. And the database where the vehicle administration can access any outstanding tickets, that they can generate their letter to the place or vehicle owner.
Meeting's over.
Plus, they give us a DVD every month, that's a breakdown of all the outstanding tickets. They have this report of what police officer has written, what tickets for that period.
All the stats.
Just all the stats that come from DVD every month. That's why we kind of get this, kind of bounce around numbers on a financial report, because we don't have that DVD. Generally, by the first meeting of the month, we do, second meeting of the month. But they, they can sort, or they can actually sort however they want, however we desire to have it. So they are very much a, have a data manipulator, a data supplier, a contractor for us.
Rock, we're getting ready to depart here, but so far, I guess we're bonding to what you're saying about enforcing, not enforcing the parking meters and limit the parking until the end of the year. We do a lot of things around, I don't know if anybody still wants to throw some things around, but...
I'll watch the video.
But that's, that's what we were going to do, the thought was, you know what you're saying.
But that does lead into, Dan said that we could not get any more parts for those machines, and I looked too. I found stuff all over eBay. I found those things, I mean, from thirty-nine dollars to a hundred and seventy-four ninety-nine, all over eBay, the exact models that we use. Leads me into another thing, that we need a purchasing person. We need somebody that's able to go out and able to look at these things also and figure out exactly what's going on. Which each department we go to, be it, be it the lines, be it town administration, be it the TPW, and one's house shopping. So this way, he's not missing pork also, that we can go out and save money if we stay with the parking stuff.
Yeah, I, I don't know what the model was. That's why I didn't, I couldn't go further.
They're all over the place. Even if you need to change, they still have the same post, it's just a different model, but it's the same post you change. Are we collecting money out of the town, like, still?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, of course.
I think as much as...
Actually, we're a little surprised at that collection. A little bit surprised with that.
I think Canal was out there for the last collection, wasn't he?
I think Larry started, like, he had a little money.
Yeah, but he did out collect, he sent it, the one thing that he had not done, he was out collecting.
So it was a nice day, not a bad, they could walk around town with that car.
One thing I have to say with that commissioner is eBay is not a supplier of parts. You go on there, it might be there, it might not be there. When you say eBay.
We use them all the time.
If you need five, ten such and such, eBay might only have two, seven, eight hundred.
I use them all the time. For old, old things that have been old, I use them for the first aid company. I mean, and I do agree with you, at some point in time, it will be some obsolete, but that's going to just go into a remodel. It's just like phones, I mean, you can buy, if you want an S4, you know, Samsung, you can buy dirt cheap on there. It's, it's just an avenue, if Dan, or if you need a part, or if you need something, there's plenty of things that we can find there. And again, I personally believe essential purchasing of agents, whoever that partner falls under, Steve. That, that I think it would be the city with talent.
Louis, you want to give Rob a brief synopsis of the KCI and discussion we had?
KCI, we're going to put the proposal on hold, and I'm going to make an appointment with the water supply program people. And get out and discuss the concept with them before we proceed with any further out-of-money. So, I'll do that. That's what you want.
Yeah. You're beating there, man.
I'll show yours, I'll listen.
Yours, I just passed it on.
All right, where are we at? Is the meeting over?
No.
Where are we at on the agenda?
We are on wrap-up.
Oh, wrap-up, perfect. What's a wrap-up, Louis? I, I think I asked Michelle to put that on there. And if there's any questions from the last meeting that we wanted to discuss, because a lot, a lot of times, people come in and suggest something, and we're going with it. And I think our intent was to try to answer the questions that we had in the last meeting at the Donnelly workshop, or discuss them a little bit more. Okay, I may, of course, undermine notes, I don't know what your notes are, what my notes are. The, I think Commissioner Van Veen brought up the auto valve at Bellville, what are we going to do about that? I had talked to, follow up with our engineer, Ryan Flitman, about it, and he has to recommend a modeling of it, because it might not be valuable. And it may be expensive. But he didn't recommend that we put a valve there necessarily because of maintenance issue, I don't know. I wondered whether it runs simply with the recommendation of Ken to buy this valve or not. I think it's a good point, also, I think it was necessary still. I don't, I don't have a good recommendation for that valve, like, at all. Anyway, that's, I did follow up, but I talked to the engineer about that. We already authorized hiring a parking enforcement person when they need that process. I don't know the status, they gave it to Don, they had to keep Don to run with, he did the change convention. Stand in assault, or I'll go contact them for the next steps and begin that process. I think I talked to Steve about it, and he has the, they went twelve months previous electric records, which I think we have. Well, obviously, we would have, and we'll provide that information to them, because they'll need to know the consumption of electricity by kilowatts that we'll need. Donnelly had, Chief Donnelly had sent me a email that he didn't necessarily recommend that we pursue two nineteen North Street for the building, police department's needs. I may want to discuss that with him, but he didn't believe it would be a cost, a cost benefit to us to do that. Not sure about the veggers on two thirteen, the police handle that, I don't really get into veggers too much. I don't think we've been able to get anybody from Comcast. We wanted somebody from Comcast in here, we haven't been able to get, get anybody from Comcast to come in here, talk with that channel.
Yeah, I was telling Michelle today, because he took over for Tom Worley.
Yeah, new Tom.
He's been very, very difficult to get in touch with, I think he's feeling, because Tom was actually out sick for a couple of months. And then they replaced with, first of all, they moved him up, and he is overwhelmed. And it's not, he used to be right back on an email or a phone call, and it's been very, very difficult to get him. They will all be at Fall Fest, I will tell you, because they're going to be right in front of our office with new services that they're having to help them.
Comcast Foods.
Comcast Foods, yes.
Anyway. The question came up about the, there's a cash and carry business down one Alfred Street. It's not a pawn shop, so they comply with regulations to be in that pawn system. It's just somebody comes in, they sell something, and they sell it. It's not a pawn shop, but they pawn. There was a question about operating the shop, like, is that in town, is it a business, or is it not a pawn shop? So anybody could walk in there and buy anything?
Is that a pawn shop?
Yeah, but they're, it's acting like a consignment shop, I think.
But anyway, they're not a pawn.
So I should say, yes.
Well, I think the word pawn is where you actually take something in and then they give you, they hold it in money.
Right, for money, and I don't think that they're doing that. They're saying, they're taking it in, they're buying it from you.
Right.
It's kind of, it's kind of a little crazy, actually.
Yeah.
Dave Fordice was here, he had, has a number of comments, one of the comments was about this bean hum, this bean hum is on our restoration program, so it'll be, it'll be replaced. It was already scheduled for that. He had also had a question about the...
Does he know? Does he know?
Yeah, sent a letter, he has court writing, also sent it to him in writing. And as a matter of fact, the next day, and also sent him a excerpt from the, on the Bay restoration.
I did see it.
Requirement from the M E site, you know, and I sent that to him. So, I'm very, very happy now. Have we received any notification from Artesian on the meeting date?
And I sent another email to him again today. He had an offer, trying to coordinate everybody's schedules.
Okay.
So I did follow up email there as well.
Very good. I'd certainly still like to meet with him, and I think whether or not we can probably, I guess we really can't talk about it, and you'll have to direct me if we can or can't. But Mr. Stork brought up about the agreement with the two wells and the Snyder property, probably... We already had a meeting. Oh, you already spoke about that today? Oh, very good. Okay, well, I'll look at the video.
No, we discussed it.
We did discuss it.
Additional recommendations. Very good. Are you prepared to address it, or do you want to address? Well, I just wanted to kind of know where we're at. It is valid agreement. It is over twenty-five years. Eight years have expired, and they're seventeen years ago. Some provisions that Mr. Downs was aware of is the fact that under that agreement, we had to annex a piece of property off of the Road Eastern Track, which we've already done. We annexed that in two thousand six. Additionally, they were, to today, a hundred and twenty-four acres of land off of Prince Town Road East. That was under a conservation piece, and actually, we're on our middle trust, and that was done. The outstanding issue now is the PUD, you know, PUD regulations, I think it's, Jake's not here, but the attorney for Mr. Snyder has sent, suggested provisions for the PUD that obviously the board and the planning commission will do. But I think that's essentially where we're standing.
I was concerned, maybe concerns is, I was curious as to whether any or all of the non-contingent requirements have been met, and things that were supposed to be transferred or such have been met. It appears that all of those things that are not contingent on future events have been accomplished. Parkings can be transferred, parking's can be annexed. The balance of the things that might come for the benefit of the town are really contingent on the things that have not yet happened.
That's based on the both regulations?
Primarily, yes. Yeah, that seems to be the next sticking point, maybe sticking point isn't the right word, but that seems to be the next triggering event that would then result in further things.
Just want to confirm that our meetings are, were set at, first, Wednesday of the month was our regular meeting. Then second week was a working session. Third was our second meeting for the town. Are we going to go back to that? Because I, there's certain programs and stuff that I normally follow each year, I just want to make sure that we're, because I've got to start planning my scheduled year, especially since school started up.
Yeah, I believe that's our...
Are we going back to our regular, that's what I'm asking, I want to make sure.
Yeah, I think we've, I think we're, I think we're pretty well caught up on understanding the, what the departments have had, and I think that was that, going to be that fourth way thing.
Something that is very, very important we have to throw in, how they actually, and I just want to make sure, you know, because other things we...
Grandma, no.
That's, that's just twenty-four-seven grandma. Even when things are over, it's still fun and top of that.
Now, that's, I think we're going to go back to the regular schedule.
And if we have to, I know that.
Actually, that's your schedule, because you were the one that originated it, when you were mayor the first time.
I brought, I brought the fourth worship.
Yep.
That effective September.
And you, you had an opportunity to talk to the board a little bit about our service, Steve, very good.
I don't know if there are any questions.
Yes, I certainly wasn't aware of that. It was kind of enlightening to know a little bit of that, and I felt it was important for everyone else to...
Just give me a buzz or an email or a couple of...
Anything else, Louis, is that it?
And Mary Jo wanted you to get something out to us with reference to the...
Yeah, copy of the...
Okay.
I just, because it was taken off the original agenda, particularly.
Yes.
And she's out on medical.
So I'll get your copy.
So I asked to bring your assistance in there, if we can still get the updates. So when she is available, we can have some of these discussed.
There we go. And let's see, we're going to, of course, meet next Wednesday, but leading up to, on September twentieth, this Fall Fest. And I'd like to ask the town board to participate with me in the five-k wall. So if you're available.
Will you bring animals?
Well, that's...
Crows, yeah.
I'm a cat or snake.
Have lots of them.
You can bring your cat if you want.
I'd like to ask everyone to...
Just try not, not like I have the ball for me.
I'll bring my... I can't do the wall.
All right, with that, getting a burn.